Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lessburns, Cascade Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call and roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
So, Fraser Lessburns.
Here.
Treasurer Corstang.
Here.
Trustee Castle.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would say things. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstang, to approve the agenda. I'm sorry. To approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have two presentations this evening from two important community partners, the local YMCA, and also the Kent Conservation District. Our first presenter is Ms. Nicole Hansen. Ms. Hansen is the new executive director of the local Cascade Mary Freebed branch. She's here tonight to give us an overview of the services and programs available to residents. Welcome. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you for having me tonight. As she mentioned, my name's Nicole Hansen. I'm the Mary Freebed Executive Director here in town at the local YMCA. I just appreciate the time on the agenda today and just wanted to, most importantly, say thank you. Thank you for inviting the YMCA into the Cascade community. About 11 years ago, we broke ground and started to build that wonderful facility. It is the first facility on the globe to be certified universally designed facility. And what that really means is it's a facility that is designed to ensure that we are providing access for all. And really, that being the layer of our mission at the YMCA is ensuring that all have access through many different means, whether it be physical means to access programs and even financial means to access programs. Currently, we serve just over 15,000 members of the Cascade community at the Mary Freebed YMCA. Forty percent of those members are members with us as a family. And what that means to us is that the entire family gets the opportunity to be exposed to health and wellness, but also the social responsibilities, the youth development opportunities, to ensure that they become great citizens of our city, of our greater Grand Rapids communities. Thus far, in 2024, we have distributed over $325,000 in financial assistance to families right here in the Cascade community at the Mary Freebed YMCA. We embark on many ventures to raise dollars and look for philanthropy to support the scholarship fund that supports all of those members and allows them the opportunity to continue to participate. What I'm here to just put in front of you is not only the thank you for inviting us into this community, but also the willingness and wanting and desire to continue to partner and collaborate as we move forward into the next decade of serving this Cascade community and what that looks like and how we can serve you as a township and give back and fill the gaps that you all might determine are opportunities for growth and development here in Cascade. We're more than just the gym and swim that you might know us and see our facility, but you know, we've got teen leadership programs, entrepreneur opportunities, STEM, arts and humanities programs, and all programs designed to really help individuals embark on their health and wellness, the whole spirit, mind, and body of their journey. I left behind a packet for you full of information to help you better understand the universal design of our facility, but also all of the opportunities that you can join us at the Y and participate in activities, but also activities and opportunities that you might see as a space that we can step into and help fill that gap here in Cascade. So, just really, most importantly, here to say thank you, and I look forward to continuing to develop the relationship with the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Our next presenter is Dr. Jerry Miller. Dr. Miller is a Cascade resident and also a veteran of the United States Army, but he's here tonight in his capacity as the Chair of the Kent County Conservation District. Kent Conservation District is one of 75 roughly conservation districts throughout Michigan that work directly with local farmers, landowners, communities, provide technical assistance for all sorts of environmental issues. Dr. Miller is here tonight to recognize the community members, local Cascadians, who have shared their time and energy combating invasive species and really kind of emphasizing environmental stewardship. So with that, thank you, Dr. Miller, for coming tonight, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you very much. As indicated, I'm Jerry Miller. I'm a Cascade Town resident, and I reside on Buccaneer Drive. And as indicated, I'm here tonight as a board director and chair of the Kent Conservation District. And Kent Conservation District, like the other 74 districts, are local units of government of the state. My purpose, as indicated, is to recognize and thank you for your leadership in addressing terrestrial species, invasive terrestrial species in Cascade Township, parks, and public areas. Specifically, the Kent Conservation District is proud to present Cascade Township with a certificate of recognition, which I will do shortly, for being an early adopter and contributing critical funding to combat invasive species, such as oak wilt, and more importantly, for addressing the destructive invasive bittersweet vines. And if you don't know what a bittersweet vine looks like, we'll show you shortly because we brought a hands-on demonstration. Bittersweet vines have had a devastating impact on natural areas, parks, and property values throughout southeast Kent County. They are capable of growing up to 80 feet in height, and the vines can cover and topple mature trees, healthy trees, and jeopardizing entire ecosystems. Cascade Township was one of the first in Kent County to dedicate time and resources towards preserving its forest canopy. The early commitment enabled the Kent Conservation District Strike Team, along with West Michigan Conservation Network, to demonstrate the importance of controlling invasive species to other townships. Thanks to your leadership, neighboring communities such as Kentwood, whose mayor participated in the Kent Conservation District Bittersweet Control Video, have now hosted workdays for the control of bittersweet vines. As a result of Kentwood's initiative, the entire corridor, including Grand Rapids Charter Township, Cannon Township, Ada Parks, Cannonsburg State Game Area, Kent County Parks, and the city of Rockford have joined the effort to manage bittersweet vines. Cascade Township provided the leadership catalyst. And I'll just, as supervisor indicated, I have a military 33 years wearing our nation's uniform and using my military mantra, Cascade Township led from the front. Early detection and rapid response are vital to preventing the spread of invasive species. The work Cascade Township has supported not only reduces the spread of bittersweet vines and their berries, which are dispersed by birds into other high-quality natural areas, but it also underscores how local actions, whether it's in parks or backyards, have a meaningful impact on the quality of life for all. Your leadership has been critical in safeguarding these landscapes for future generations. Thank you for your continued commitment to protecting Kent County's and Cascade Township's natural areas. We in Kent County, we in Kent Conservation District look forward to continuing our partnership with Cascade Township. In closing, I want to introduce some members of the Kent Conservation Team that are present tonight. And with me tonight is Aaron Sloan Turner, our district manager. Aaron, would you stand, please? Jessie Schulte, previously the district manager, and now she is with Kent County Parks. Our strike team leader, Ryan, checked in this morning with COVID, so he is unable to join us tonight. And thank heavens he's not here, but hopefully he's recovering. And these are our staff, Jessie previously, and now Aaron and Ryan, who have the passion for controlling invasive species. Also, we have many of the volunteers that support not only Cascade Township, but also Kent Conservation District, and I'd ask them to stand. So, did any of there she is stand some of the others? These are all volunteers spending their time helping to control invasive species and especially bittersweet vines. So with that, we do have a certificate to give to the township, and I'll read the certificate, and then I'm going to ask for a photo. This is a Conservation Leadership Award. This certificate is awarded to Cascade Township in recognition of your support in combating invasive species, especially the destructive bittersweet vines that threaten natural areas and property values. Your leadership has inspired neighboring communities to take action, helping to protect local ecosystems. We thank you for your commitment in preserving Kent County's natural landscapes for future generations, dated October 23rd, 2024, and signed by myself and our strike team leader. So, we can get a photo?
And before, there's one missing Cascade resident tonight who really, above anybody else, it takes a team, but the one person who deserves pretty much all the credit for this is our former Parks Director, Ginny Wantie. She became the Chair in 2021. This is her passion, and she put, it was a part-time job for her. She worked with residents, she worked with our Buildings and Grounds Crew. She was the one who connected with the Conservation District. And Ginny really talked about planting a seed and growing into something great. We owe that to Ms. Wantie. So, we miss her, she's busy with her mother, but we sure appreciate all she did.
And I think she's probably virtual tonight with us. So, can we get a photo? However you want to do it.
I just want to. You're the ones doing all the work. Why don't you get in it and I'll take it? All right, look at me. Okay, I got seven there. That's fine. All right, now everybody jump and say bittersweet. Next, Article five, public comments. Now is the time to comment on anything that is already on tonight's agenda that doesn't have a public hearing. So that would be either of the YMCA or the Kent County Conservation District. We also have golf carts, potential sale at O'Neil's Body Shop, adopting a solar and battery-powered systems ordinance. We have the budget, road closures for that triathlon, Comcast's contract, office furniture, and the airport's lawsuit against Cascade. Public comment on any of those items are welcome now, and please limit your comment to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm, excuse me, my name's Tom Richardson. I live on 3438 North Applecrest. I wanted to comment on the budget tonight. I came here in June to talk about the fire millage and how I thought that the communication about the fire millage was not clear at that time. Now, based on the budget policies that you guys are going to vote on tonight, it is clear, and what became clear is that the representation in the information for voters was just not accurate. That information said there would be a .38 mil increase in the fire millage, based on the millages and the agenda and from last year's tax bills. It's about a .57 mil increase. Now, the difference in that is not a huge change in dollars. It doesn't matter too much to probably most people's pocketbook, but you know, if you want to build trust and maintain trust with public, you should put accurate numbers out there. And you know, you can't say it was a mistake. You can't say you weren't made aware of it because I came here in June and made you aware of it. So, I'm just going to encourage you to try and be more forthright and accurate in these kinds of communications. Thanks.
So what was your, you said .38. What was the misrepresentation you're alleging?
The difference in the fire millages from this year and last year is about .57. It's 1.87 in the budget resolution in the agenda. And last year was about 1.29 or 1.3 for the fire millage.
Okay, we will address that. Our finance director's not here, but if we can't address it fully tonight with our manager, we'll work on it because we'll work on getting you this information.
Hello, Scott Van Solkman, Orange. I'm glad you guys are adopting the solar ordinance. Hopefully you guys adopted since the MPSC, from what I've seen, they pretty much just almost rubber stamp everything that comes in front of them. Obviously, I read the thing saying that obviously we're not really effective for windmills. I also think the airport probably plays a little part in that, which is, you know, one good thing for that. I do have a question regarding the office furniture, which is, you know, that's good. You know, it's always good to refresh things and add that. I did not see the 13, 12 or 13 executive chairs. Those weren't on the order. And also, it shows that we're paying taxes, and you know, governments don't pay taxes. So, just wanted to make sure that either A, that the chairs were left off, and I was just curious where those were, and obviously, we don't want to get billed for taxes. So, that's it. I figured you guys would catch that, but just like to point it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone virtually? Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Motion or discussion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, the request for invoices to be paid tomorrow, and also the statements from September 2024. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve the financial actions, including invoices to be paid tomorrow and the September financial statements.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by treasurer Corstang, supported by treasurer Shipley, to approve the financial actions as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article nine, new business, first item 0762024, consider approval of special use permit at 2756 Craft Avenue for ancillary use of golf cart storing and selling. Manager Smith, or do we directly give it to Director Hendrick?
Director Hendrick has more to add. She can add. This is pretty standard once in the RBA. I don't think there's much more information to add. Does she have more?
I'm willing to answer any questions, but.
Is the applicant here tonight? Anything you want to say, sir?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, part of the stipulations that were put forward with the planning commission motion was the test driving of the golf carts are limited to the property and cannot take place off-site. How do we enforce that?
Well, it's a special use, so if they aren't following the standards of their special use, there is zoning violations that can be enforced through cease and desist orders on that action or.
Yeah, my biggest concern is just that, I don't even, we pretend to call it 27th Street, I think, at times, right? The weird private road that we've had lots of complaints about that runs alongside of there between them and the Goodwill location and back to Walmart and back to the nursing home area. That, you know, personally, if I was coming to purchase a golf cart, I would be like, eh, I'm gonna go drive it down the street here because it's not a real road. And we already get complaints about that street and the traffic on it and the lack of street signs. So, I think that's my biggest concern is just how are we going to enforce that? How are we going to make sure that they are not driving the golf carts, you know, other than just on the site?
I'm just skeptical that someone who's willing or interested in purchasing one would be satisfied keeping the test drive in the parking lot.
Yeah. Do you have any comment? Do you want to stand up?
Our parking lot is, you know, quite good size. And there's also an alley that runs between our business and Gordon Foods that should be plenty sufficient, you know?
I think that's what I'm talking about, if that's what I'm talking about. People refer to it as 27th Street, the little private road.
Are you talking the one closer to Goodwill?
I'm talking about the street that runs, or the private drive, I guess, that runs between your business, Goodwill's parking lot, that runs back through the Volvo dealership, back to Walmart, all the way back.
I am not talking about that.
Okay.
No, there is another street between that road and our business.
Okay. So, if I came to you and I said, I want to test drive this, what are you gonna say?
I would say it would be okay, but you're limited to our property.
So if there's violations of the golf cart stain on the parking lot, it's not the owner, it's potential customers, we have the ability to pull the special use permit? Revoke it?
Yes, if they're not following, well, I mean, really, it's going to become a financial issue because we're going to start fining every single time that they do this. And if they're not following the requirements of the special use, we'll give them a fine every single time.
What's required for, just like you see, we've had kids and families that are speeding, using our pathways with golf carts, but then you hear about it, but then you can't ticket them because you have to catch them in the act. So, someone comes and says, I noticed somebody test by O'Neil's, test driving a golf cart by Robinson Dental, but we didn't see it in action. Is that fine? Can we find that?
I think that's a question for the sheriff's office. I don't know that we could actually assess that fine, but the one thing that we can do, where we can't do on our pathways, is actually go and address the property owner. Because we know if the complaint is coming against this particular business, we know we can send someone to the business and say, hey, we're getting complaints on this. And from there, we can actually work on what our action's going to be. When you have someone speeding on the pathways, we can't monitor that. There's no way to identify that unless the sheriff's office happens to be there at the time to assess.
Mike, do you know how to revoke a special use permit?
Yep, notice, public hearing.
Okay, so it doesn't require, it's not so much set on fines, notice, public hearing?
Yeah, so, well, I said public hearing. It's notice and opportunity to be heard, right? Which is just a due process issue.
That's the answer I wanted to hear.
And then I have a couple of questions. How fast do these things go?
25 miles per hour.
Pretty fast for a parking lot. Because I'd want to open it up if I'm buying it. Another issue I looked at is putting in 15 parking spots for four carts.
Putting in?
In the literature I had, it said 15 golf carts parking areas.
No, I wanted to display four golf carts in any of the available spaces that were marked.
Okay, so you're putting in 15 to display four?
No, I didn't put in any.
Restriping?
We restripped our parking lot. I was requested to do that.
He has several parking spaces for people to park their cars when they.
My understanding in the literature I got, it said 15 were dedicated for golf carts, for golf carts. And they showed 15 spots. They showed some in front and some on the side. And I suspect you're gonna park four golf carts in any one of those 15 spots, right?
Correct.
You're only gonna use four of the 15.
Four is the most I requested to have up there.
I think there's actually.
Gives me a red flag. Anyway, I just don't want to see us creep to 15 or 12 or nine golf carts out there at all times. And again, I'm saying at 25 miles an hour is for test drives, somebody's gonna go off. So, I have those red flags and another business on a existing business lot. So those are three concerns I have. But thanks for your help.
You're welcome.
Andrew, how big is that lot? Just a minute.
How much?
One, you have lots of buildings on your lot.
Mike, I have a question. Now, as my gray matter is coming out and flowing into my hair, didn't we have golf cart storage or golf cart dealership down there years ago in that area? You can't remember one? I thought decades ago, we had a US golf cart.
We had that driving range down by the.
No memory of that.
Yeah, that's what happens when I get my gray haircut this morning.
Used to be pig farms and stuff too, right?
Oh, no, yeah.
Any further questions or discussion, motions?
Yes, supervisor. I think the applicant's really gone through a lot with the planning commission. They've been very diligent, and I think the applicant has got things under control. Obviously, you can't control every action that somebody might do. But with that, given the vetting done by the planning commission, I move to approve the special use permit, especially knowing that we can revoke it if the time ever is required. And motion to approve it with the planning commission's conditions as well.
Shipley supports motion.
Further discussion?
Just I think that Mike answered my one question. I was just worried that if they are on the road or on the back street, what we're gonna do to be able to revoke it if something happens or if we have complaints, because we already have a lot of people coming to the board meetings talking about that street, private drive behind there. So, I agree.
There's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve special use permit as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, one trustee opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Next, item 0772024, approval of the introduction to amend zoning ordinance to regulate one utility scale. utility scale battery energy storage systems and two solar energy systems. I wanna begin by thanking Township Legal Counsel Mike Homier for proactively bringing this issue to our attention. The state's recent taking away of local control to regulate land use concerning certain renewable energy developments is a major concern to communities throughout the state. Mr. Homier will provide an overview of the recommended zoning amendments as well as the recent state actions which make these zoning amendments necessary and prudent. Mr. Homier?
Thank you. Um, so, as you may be aware, PA two thirty-three of twenty twenty-three was passed last year. Um, but it doesn't actually take effect until November twenty-ninth of this year. Um, and what that act says basically is that you, um, have to do one of two things. One is do nothing. You don't, nothing in PA two thirty-three compels you to do anything. If you don't adopt an ordinance that is compatible, uh, then you cede the jurisdiction of that issue or citing certificate for those facilities to the MPSC, the Public Service Commission. Public Service Commission then, um, could issue a citing certificate, assuming it meets the requirements of the act. And your, uh, zoning ordinance would be preempted in its entirety. Now, there are a couple important things about PA two thirty-three. One of which is they define compatibility, um, and those compatibility, um, issues or elements are under section two twenty-six, subparagraph eight. And that's important because it defines what you would have to include within a compatible renewable energy ordinance. So in order to cite those land uses and retain local control, you would have to agree to those elements under two twenty-six, subparagraph eight. Those are things like setbacks and noise regulations and lighting and fencing, um, height of the panels, okay? So if we're talking about solar. And PA two thirty-three only applies to those projects that are larger than fifty megawatts of nameplate capacity. Um, on the solar side and on the, uh, battery energy storage side, so. The drafts that we have, um, submitted to the township were intended to meet that requirement. One, make you compatible, um, so that you have, uh, local control over where those facilities are located. In the meantime, um, on October tenth, the, um, uh, MPSC issued an order. That order, um, was opened up, um, in twenty twenty-three as a result of PA two thirty-three. And really what it does is it tries to set rules and regulations relative to how the MPSC is going to process applications and their view, if you will, of PA two thirty-three and how it works. One thing you won't find in PA two thirty-three is any locational, um, exclusion. That is to say that those requirements under two twenty-six, subparagraph eight are the sole, uh, elements that the state has mandated with respect to, uh, compatible renewable energy, uh, ordinances. So that if you have an ordinance that contains those provisions, a developer of those facilities must meet with you, must then apply for your approval. What is nowhere located in PA two thirty-three is somehow a preemption about locational standards. Like you do or have with any other land use under zoning, right? We segment land uses into typically four categories. There may be subcategories, but typically they're residential, agricultural, commercial, and industrial. And so, these land uses are no different in that PA two thirty-three does not restrict your ability, uh, to determine the location. Now, that's a fundamental disagreement we have with the MPSC. So again, this order was issued on October tenth. I got a copy of it on October eleventh. Between October eleventh and today, uh, last count I had was twenty-eight municipalities are committed to appealing that order to the Court of Appeals. Thirty more of our clients and prospective clients are likely to join that in the next week and a half. The appeal has to be filed by November eighth. We are recommending that our clients appeal because if you accept the, um, interpretation by the MPSC, it basically guts your ability for any local control. What the MPSC has done is said that if it's not located in, um, two twenty-six, subparagraph eight, you are precluded from regulating that. And that just flips Michigan law on its head.
When did they do that?
Uh, October the tenth. And so, um, we only have a thirty days in which to appeal. That turn, that actually is a Saturday, so we're moving it back to Friday, which is November the eighth. So it's important, um, for a couple reasons. One is we have had a tremendous amount of response from our clients and even non-clients across the state that may be represented by other firms reaching out and joining that appeal because it's of paramount importance. When the legislation was passed, legislators promised you would have local control. And now the MPSC is trying to take it away beyond what I believe is their authority to do so. Not to mention the fact that they've, um, redefined terms in PA two thirty-three. They are not, um, the legislature. They have no such authority, in my view. And so, you know, I knew we would have a fight over this eventually, um, on the local control issue. I didn't know it would come this early and through, you know, basically rulemaking by the, uh, MPSC, um, to do. So we've still recommended to all our clients that they proceed with this because we want to have that compatible renewable energy ordinance in place because it triggers certain requirements under the act for developers of these facilities to, one, hold public meetings in the jurisdiction, to offer to meet with the, um, highest elected, um, officer, the supervisor. And then within thirty days after that meeting, we have to tell those developers whether we have a compatible ordinance. If we do, then they must apply for local approval. There, um, in the order that the MPSC issued, um, they, and I believe correctly so, said, well, we we, the MPSC, we don't have any adjudication authority over whether it's compatible or not. And those would have to go to an administrative hearing officer. Well, that's not in the statute either. Okay, so it's sort of an invention of a process that the legislature either did not include or purposely did not include. Either way, it is a requirement, an additional requirement or an additional, um, element of PA two thirty-three that is simply not there. Because those questions, in my view, should be adjudicated in a competent court. And so until and unless that happens, our clients have vowed to appeal that. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
What about existing, um, solar applications that have been approved that we may have in the township?
Or if we're talking about, um, on the commercial side, that's all that this regulates, right? But even then, your ordinances, to the extent that they exist and it's an under fifty megawatts, this PA two thirty-three does not apply at all.
Do we need it, is it, is it adequate as far as commercial, if there are any?
Yeah, so the way we, the way we configured it is it, your ordinances, regardless of whether they are compatible or not, would still apply to anything less than fifty megawatts. So the only issue we're arguing about are the setback requirements um, and whether those are compatible and the location requirements for those facilities above fifty megawatts.
We don't have any commercial facilities currently though, right? It's just maybe some residential facility or people that have stuff, so. Previously approved commercials is a mute point, because we don't have any.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any.
I mean.
You would know.
Right, yeah, it's just residential.
Yeah, and, and and you know, some of the only places that are probably suitable even for a large commercial, um, would be the southeast portion of the township where there might be an opportunity to assemble enough land to construct a facility. And with battery, battery storage, it's different because it's a much smaller footprint. You're talking about um, containers full of batteries that, um, do one of two things. Either they draw power and store it from renewable energy projects like solar or wind. Or they will take, um, power from the grid um, during non-peak times when it's cheaper, store it and sell it back to the grid when it's during high demand times when you can sell it for more.
Do you know how many acres are, for the solar piece of it? I know you just said the battery piece, it's, it can be a small amount. But how many acres are needed for the solar piece?
So, um, there's a project that, um, I was involved with in, uh, on the east side in Santa Lat County. Um, it's Samsung project. And it comes out, but the area is a little larger than what I'm gonna give you, but the panel coverage area is five hundred and forty-eight acres.
And that's how much is needed to meet? This?
Nope. So that project is a hundred and eighty-two megawatt project, okay? So nameplate capacity is a hundred and eighty-two megawatt on five hundred and forty-eight acres. That comes to about one megawatt per three acres. Uh, right in there. So you can figure on one megawatt to three to five acres. The interesting part about that project was, you know, Samsung, they, they come in and they do this presentation and, and herein lies the issue. So they do a presentation and they say, you know, it's a hundred and eighty-two megawatt project. Um, and they say, well, this is enough to power twenty thousand homes. And the chair of the planning commission says, well, we only have six hundred people. And so that's sort of the issue involved and why you need some local control because these facilities in some places um, are much larger than they need to be to power those localities. That power is being used somewhere else. And so I have another, um, client where it's proposed, um, single township, um, solar project, six thousand acres. Now, this is, this is agricultural rural prime farmland. And six thousand acres is gonna have a devastating effect. So these, this is.
They're saying no local control.
Basically what the MPSC has said, because what happened was, we, um, took a look at the act, uh, realized that it was more of a conditional preemption, which is, okay, you adopt these standards and you're not preempted. And so no, nothing in that act determined where in those municipalities you could locate it. And so we started creating overlay district and said, okay, taking a look at, um, the township, where is it best suited? And that is, we looked at several different things, but two really important ones were density and transmission lines and substations. Where are they? Because those provide interconnection to those systems. And we wanted lower density to have the least adverse impact on adjacent land uses. And so we created overlay districts that were sufficient in size enough to create, um, a locality for citing those in a sufficient number to meet what our potential demonstrated need would be in terms of energy demand. And it's not a, um, specific calculation, but it's a rough calculation about, you know, how many, how many houses do we have? How many commercial establishments? How many industrial? And now what is our expected energy demand with some rate of growth over time? And you would come out for most of our clients in rural communities, anywhere between three and five hundred acres. And if you had that, you would produce, like on the Samsung project, right? You're producing enough to power twenty thousand homes. We're not even close to that. And so that gets to the demonstrated need because one, it's lawful land use and two, um, you know, there, there could be a demonstrated need. Now, we didn't exclude the land use in the first place. So I'm not even sure you get to the demonstrated need component, but we wanted to make sure that we address that in those overlays. But what the MPSC did is they came along then and issued an order and said, it's a permitted use in every single district in the township. We don't care about your zoning. We'll cite it. And if we cite it, give a citing certificate, we'll locate it anywhere we want, as long as it meets those requirements of PA two thirty-three. Well, you can imagine in more rural, some of my rural township clients, they don't even have areas that are zoned industrial. And so now you're going to get, say, for instance, battery storage in the middle of an ag property, um, on a farm somewhere. And, you know, there are concerns like, you know, runaway thermal events where they catch on fire. And their, their fire departments are not even equipped to put them out, and so they will just burn. And then you have to worry about ground contamination and everything that comes out of that, so. And so it's a significant concern. And, uh, and what the MPSC basically said is unless it's in that section, you cannot regulate it. And I just don't believe that that's how the law is written. I don't believe that's what the state of the law currently is.
I have a question for Jade. Jade, here, the action request, it says, set the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate. Are you asking us to, to do both of those tonight? Set, set?
Tonight's, tonight's the introduction. I apologize for the language. Um, but tonight is the introduction of the ordinance, the adoption and setting the second reading.
Right, so we don't have to make any motions then.
But we do need to make a motion.
But you're gonna need, yeah.
Right?
Gotcha. Okay, okay, I wasn't in here.
Yeah, that is, that was.
Yeah, that was not known at the time of the packet going out.
That's what I figured.
Mike, is the, uh, proposed ordinance that you've written, uh, one you've used with other municipal clients?
Yes.
And it's consistent, it's got everything covered in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're just over, the overlay district that, that this township is proposing that the solar or battery storage be put in is where, Andrea?
So that would be overlay B of, um, overlay B, which is in the southwest corner of the township, where we already have industrial. So it would be essentially on the, the west side of the northwest runway of the airport, or the south side of the west east, I'm sorry, yeah.
So an existing industrial.
The northeast or south side of the east-west runway.
So, but just to clarify, overlay B of the airport district, correct?
Yeah.
And that's the only place? And we're talking the battery and solar, which is basically existing industrial.
The battery, because of the fans and all of that, isn't it?
Well, so, um, since you would be adopting a, uh, compatible ordinance, the limitation is fifty-five DVA. Now, it's not measured at the property line, it's measured, um, depending on where it's located, uh, on the outer, at the outer edge of the outer wall of a adjoining structure, so. Um, but it's fifty-five DVA.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, I've just heard that across the country, that there's noise issues with Samsung.
They're.
The fans.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have to be constantly cooled, that's for sure.
Any indication why the state chose to just, there's all different types of energy sources, why they just chose, um, these three?
No, well, I suspect that because, you know, when you're talking about, let's take nuclear, for example. Nuclear energy was added, um, through an amendment to be, uh, green energy now, right? And so, um, in any event, you know, what happened was, um, all of the major regulated utilities are taking down their coal-fired plants. Uh, but they're doing it at a rate where, in my view, they can't produce enough energy, um, with wind and solar or battery storage to make up for it. And so you see this with Palisades, right? Palisades was being decommissioned. All of a sudden, uh, the state pledged, I think it was three hundred and some million dollars to get it back online. The federal government guaranteed one point five billion in loans to put it back online. And now they're talking about adding two new, uh, small modular units to what's existing there that they intend to bring back online. And so you've seen this, um, greater push now towards some nuclear, including putting Palisades back online and, and building new units there that are small modular reactors that you utilize different technologies. So, um, I, you know, I think that it's maybe sunken in that we're not gonna produce the energy we need from solar and wind here, but that's a whole different policy decision.
So, so the motion is to join the appeal that has been recommended?
Two separate motions, probably, there's probably a motion to join the appeal. And then the motion that is stated in our packet, so there's two.
Which is this, wh- when I reread the, the, the red, the motion, it's to set the second reading and adoption. At the second reading, that's how that's reading. So you wanna, you need that as the one motion, and then the second one is to allow Foster Swift. To add Cascade Township in their appeal to.
Let's do it separately. So I'd make a motion to uh motion that Cascade Township joins in the class action support. That's a motion by Supervisor Les Brown, supported by Treasurer Corstange.
Is that, is that detailed enough, Mike?
Yeah, but what I would say is uh motion to authorize Foster Swift to pursue the appeal. Of the MPSC's October ten, twenty twenty-three order regarding PA two thirty-three.
Motion, so I'll restate my. The motion uh to authorize Foster Swift.
To appeal.
To appeal. The MPSC October tenth order as stated.
Yes.
I support that. That was made by Supervisor Les Brown, supported by Treasurer Corstange, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. And then the second?
So, you know, I, I should have mentioned this, I didn't, um because it's always important about costs, right? And so the benefit here is economy of scale.
Mm-hmm.
Uh we've added so many municipalities. Um that the cost um to the township of appealing is going to be a fraction of what it would if you, and if you did this on your own. And so what we're gonna do is we're going to um bill those costs on a monthly basis. But we're gonna divide the costs equally amongst all of the municipalities because it's all the same legal issue. And so it's important for two reasons, one, if we have fifty-plus municipalities appealing. Uh the Court of Appeals can take it seriously, and two, it substantially defrays the cost. I would expect at the end of the day that your costs on that are not going to be in excess of ten thousand dollars. And I can't guarantee that, but that's, we're actually shooting for less than that. And I think the number that we have joining or have joined already, and the number we expect to join. Um it's gonna be substantially less than even that.
Anything from the MTA, Michigan Township Association?
I have, I have um heard the. From third parties that they're, they're likely to support it. I suspect if they do, it will be through an amicus brief um at some point, so. Um so I suspect they will. But I haven't, I have not talked to them.
I meant, what's to set the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance?
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Tre- uh trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Shipley, to set the second reading and.
Adoption.
Adoption.
Adoption of the proposed ordinance as stated. Do we need a roll call for that soon?
If you want.
Uh, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next, item zero seven eight, twenty twenty-four.
So did we set the second reading?
It's in the resolution.
Yeah, for the next, okay, first hearing in November.
Okay, thank you.
Item zero seven eight, twenty twenty-four, uh consider resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Manager Smith?
Uh thank you Supervisor. Um what you have before you today um is the budget that you've seen, this will be the, the fourth time we did a work set, I'm sorry, third time. Did a work session on September twenty-third and also held the public hearing October ninth. Uh nothing has changed within the budget that's been presented to you. This is the formal action where. We will set the budget for twenty twenty-five, which goes into effect on January first, twenty twenty-five. I will take the opportunity to address the question in regards to the fire millage. Uh we don't have our finance director here. But I went back through and found our spreadsheet and I found the marketing we put out. I do remember when you were here in person and and had some questions. I don't believe that the marketing was misleading, the voted fire millage was one point three seven, which is in the resolution tonight. There always has been an additional fire millage, which is included. And then the point two one five seven, uh other millage is to do expire in twenty twenty-seven is not being assessed. So the, the numbers are accurate in the resolution that's before you. And I believe that the communication that went out to the residents was, was accurate as well.
Was he assuming, it was his statement assuming that the other would, that the other one would be assessed?
I don't know, you'd have to ask, I'm not sure.
I'm not asking. Okay, thank you. Uh further questions, discussions, motions?
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution, well, to create the, sorry, I meant the wrong, there we go. Approve the attached resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Cascade Charter. Cascade Charter Township General and Special Revenue Funds Budget.
Support.
It's a motion by Treasurer Corstange, supported by Trustee Nordhook. To approve the proposed resolution approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget as stated. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, Supervisor Les Brown.
Yes, motion carried. Manager Smith, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Item zero seven nine, twenty twenty-four, consider resolution to approve road closure for the twenty twenty-five triathlon happening June seventh and eighth. See, welcome again, sir.
Hi, thank you. John Conkling, Ada Resident Event Director for Grand Rapids Triathlon. So uh we're entering our fifteenth year, uh we continue to be a leader in the space, uh tracking upwards of fourteen to fifteen to sixteen hundred. Uh athletes from across the nation, uh usually about thirty-five states are represented, a couple countries. Uh but sixty percent of our participant base are right here in West Michigan, they live and work here. Um so i- it's very hyper-local, even though it's pulling from a national uh uh kind of base. Uh we were a USA Triathlon State Championship again last year, we've been a national championship, so the event. Continues to kind of be a leader in Michigan and also be nationally recognized. Uh what we're asking for is to hold the event again on Saturday, June seventh. And then Sunday, June eighth, we have a short day on Saturday for our um shorter distances, more newbie friendly. Uh about three hundred fifty athletes last year were brand new to the sport, brand new triathletes, period, so it's a, it's a kind of a big health and wellness uh entry. Point for folks, and then on Sunday is our longer day, uh athletes start in the order at seven. Have to be done by three thirty, and then we get roads back open. So uh on Saturday, we close up to, or we request to have closed up to Lareway Lake from the Ada side, so it's a. A cut through right there, it's minimally uh impacting residents hopefully, and then Sunday goes all the way out to Cascade because our run course is on Thorndaleburg Drive. And that's uh, that's everything I have, I'd be happy to answer questions.
I have a comment. I live along that route and it's your volunteers have been more than. Kind and generous to the residents, myself included.
Wonderful.
Never had a problem getting in or out. And uh I've noticed that all the motorists that do utilize that route drive carefully, so.
Thank you.
Kudos to you and your organization.
We have great volunteers, we're very blessed.
Is it affected at all by the algae bloom or the out-of-control weeds that we had this summer?
We completely missed it, thankfully, by weeks, yeah, when I drove by later in the summer and saw. Uh that, I mean, that would have shut our swim portion down at least, we would have had to have been a, a. Basically a duathlon at that point where it's just the, the run and, and bike and that's it.
So it was bad enough it would have?
Oh, completely, yeah, yeah, no question. We test the water there uh the week of the event and make sure it's, you know, within safe levels and we've never had an issue, but. Yeah, when I saw that, that would have, that would have been an issue this year had we been a later summer event.
Good to know, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution um for the road closure for the triathlon, Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley. To approve the road closures on June seventh and eighth for the twenty twenty-five triathlon. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Later, yes, Supervisor Les Brown.
Yes, motion carried, thank you for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item zero eight zero, twenty twenty-four, uh the approval of the Comcast contract. Welcome, thank you for coming in person, Manager Smith, I'll turn this over to you.
Sure, thank you Supervisor. Um so this is something that uh you only see before you every ten years, this is the franchise agreement with Comcast. Um it's a very standard agreement, um happens across the entire state for um internet providers and video providers um. To offer service in our community. Jess Snyder is here from Comcast, if there's any questions for him tonight. Um but we do have uh um all of the information in your packet in regards to what the contract looks like, and we'll be submitting that upon approval.
What happens if we don't sign it?
I believe it goes into effect anyway. I, I, I will ask the attorney and uh Mr. Snyder.
Talk about usurpation of local control. But we're happy to have you here tonight.
Thank you. Uh yeah, so PA four eighty of two thousand and six is the state law that governs the franchise renewal. Um it sets pretty strict parameters in terms of what the local community gets to. Uh insert into the agreement, the largest of those being the franchise fee amount zero to five percent. Um and then what the obligations of the, the franchise holder, in the next case Comcast, have to do, so if you guys were to decline. Um we would go back and look at why, and there's very limited reasons why you can, and if. We didn't think it was in those, we would send you, you and your attorney a letter saying, thank you for saying no, but it went into effect anyways, per state law. Um and then if there was a dispute beyond that, then it would go above me to the attorneys who would interact with your attorney. Essentially is what would happen.
So this often comes up with franchises, right, um both uh cable and then under the Metro Act for fiber and that. And, and for your electric franchises with your electric company, and somebody asked me once, well, what if we don't approve the franchise with consumers? Well, then the lights go off and nobody wants that, so you know, these are kind of what I call, eh even though. You know, cable franchises or even Metro Act are not yet defined as utilities, they're coming very close to it. And so this is the state's sort of regulatory scheme on making sure that people have access to those facilities.
And I, I did put five percent in the contract.
That was a second question.
One question just for Jade. At some point, we had had public comment questioning something about wires being exposed or utility workers working and. I know you had mentioned at some point in time, something about. Policy maybe where they would have to notify us of work being done within the township, and then there would be a timeframe when things would be. Completed so that we wouldn't have just random wires being exposed or things like that, because.
They're supposed to be, they're, some communities have a, a permitting process where they have to come in and, and apply for that permit. That way your, the community does know who's working in your right of way.
Okay, so, so that's something we can do separate from this still.
And the, and the, the key part of that is getting the word out to the utility companies and the, and the carriers.
I know we've had that complaint before.
I got a couple of comments about that too. One of the big problems, if you notice, a little communication uh uh closures that are left open and wires hanging out. The vast majority of those that are left hanging out in the wind are from the mist dig contractors. They go in and I, I've inspected a couple that. Our residents have complained about, like down at Mount Rue and Cascade Road area. And the bonds are taken off the tel- off of the cables. There's no electrical protection or bonding because they're hell hanging out from when the contractors hooked on their cable locating sensors. And I'll be darned if I can get anybody down to the telephone company or the power company with my past. Contacts down there to get that corrupted. And eventually it's gonna also affect your local service. Those wires will only hold up to ultraviolet light so long. We got a lot of, almost everywhere you go.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
So sorry, this.
No.
About you, but.
Think of all their, Comcast also utilizes, I'm sure, contractors to do the mist dig locating.
We do.
Yeah, so they go out, they open up the pedestals and they don't bother closing them back up again.
He runs them over.
That's a whole nother issue.
Yeah.
Whether it's open or closed, if someone's gonna hit it, there's gonna be a problem either way. Um to your permitting question, though, we, we are still under um all obligations for right-of-way permitting, this franchise does not change any of that. So if we're doing construction or maintenance in the road right of way, we have to submit permits to the Kent County Road Commission to do that. Um and that doesn't change under the franchise either way, so that's in addition to the franchise agreement.
I want to thank you personally for your help with the neighborhood, we had um the internet outages and. You were really responsive, so thanks for handling that.
Absolutely.
Then I, I make a motion to accept the contract on, with Comcast with a five percent fee.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the um on Comcast contract with the five percent. Capture, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Item zero eight one, twenty twenty-four, consider approval of furniture purchase. Manager Smith?
Well, thank you Supervisor. Um after being here over a year and looking at the uh administration building and the needs of um. What the staff needs, we've actually grown our staff over the course of the last year. And then when the building was uh moved into probably three or four years ago. It does not meet the needs of the current staff or the future staff, so what is before you tonight? Is we've been working with Kent Office Furniture in regards to a new floor plan for some of the cubicle space. And um that will allow us appropriate seating for not only our staff, future staff, interns, and some of our consultants as well. Um as Andrea can attest, our planning consultant, I, you can never find her in the same seat twice, because she's bouncing from vacant seat to vacant seat. So this proposal before you is um for seven new open space cubicle workstations that would include desks, file cabinets and chairs. One new office chair of works, seven new office chairs for workstations, a new office suite of furniture to include a desk, couch, meeting table and chairs. And then twelve executive level boardroom chairs, electrical prep, also assembly, and then moving the existing furniture that we have. Um I will address uh one of the questions or comments that came out of the, the um, the audience. Um yes, I do see that taxes on here that's already been addressed with them and that is coming off. The chair options, uh we're still in deciding on which ones to, to go with. Those are actually to replace these chairs, these very comfortable chairs that we're sitting in tonight. Um so that's yet to be determined, that's why there's no quote in here. Um you will see in my request that I'm asking for a not-to-exceed amount to work with them. That will cover all expenses, so it's not a defined dollar amount, but a not-to-exceed amount.
And it was in the budget.
And it is in the budget, correct?
As the manager alluded, we've added a lot to the staff. We added Parks Recreation Director, we added more administrative directors. And it's gonna continue to grow, I mean, as township grows, our personnel, eh uh payroll, so to speak, is gonna grow. So it's only natural, it's not the Taj Mahal that we think it might be. It's needed for the function of the township staff.
It's sad that it was a. I started. Very end of twenty twenty, we moved into that new administrative building, it was all set up early twenty twenty-one. And under the previous, at that time, there was already discussion that there was no. That it would, the space wasn't there, that was already short and people weren't, they weren't sure what they were gonna do, so.
Just, just one more comment.
One more thing you've been given.
With these upgrades or new furniture, um we will still only have two empty seats within the building. That can accommodate anything in the future, and currently the supervisor does not have an office because I took it away from her. Um and then also on the building side, they've actually consolidated offices over there too, so it's, it's, it's a. So this is a temporary fix, um but it, it's definitely needed.
Is it not to exceed number than the fifty-three-six?
No, the not-to-exceed is seventy-five thousand.
Oh, kind of throw on page.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of office furniture from Kentwood Office Furniture in the amount not to. Should I leave out where we're purchasing? Because we haven't made a decision yet on the, or you haven't made a decision on the chairs here?
I, they're giving, they're giving us the quotes, but you could say.
I'll just make the motion to approve that purchase of office furniture in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand.
Okay, Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the furniture purchase not exceeding seventy-five thousand, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Last item of new business, item zero eight two, twenty twenty-four. An update on the airport's lawsuit against Cascade Township regarding zoning and also direction from this board about next steps. Attorney Homier, please proceed.
So um I hope you had um an opportunity to read the opinion um that I sent to you um. The um, that opinion was entered um immediately following oral.
that opinion was entered um immediately following oral argument that we had on our motion for summary disposition. In effect, it didn't really matter what we said that day. The decision had already been made and the judge's clerk in the opinion, so um, which is fine. I um, I respect the court's decision. I disagree with it. Um, I won't go into the legal reasons why. Um, but you know, our recommendation is that uh we file a claim of appeal. It's going to be reviewed de novo. It's a appeal as a right um by the Michigan Court of Appeals. You know, some of the background of this was um uh to uh protect the public health, safety and welfare, including the natural resources of the town from further contamination, particularly on the east side of the airport. And so um, I think that's a noteworthy and important goal. I just, again, I disagree with um the analysis that was done in the opinion. Um, I thought it was um not well founded and I'll leave it at that.
Is it accurate that the airport authority's position is that it has um unilaterally, unilateral authority over all non-aeronautical, not just aeronautical, but also non-aeronautical land uses on any property that it owns and or controls, for example, that it leases?
I believe that's their position.
Do you think that was also that the county court agreed with that?
Yep.
So are you saying or that the airport authority believes that it can com- that it is completely exempt from any and all local zoning or land use regu- regulations for non-aeronautical developments?
I think that's their position.
Are you aware of any others uh by this county's ruling? Are you aware of that being the case or the law in any other sp- place in Michigan?
Uh, there certainly are exemptions carved out. Uh, this, I mean, the legislature knows how to create exemptions. Uh, there's not an express exemption or preemption in the statutes at issue here. So, I mean, you know, it's like um, take the Right to Farm Act, for example, right? There's a specific statutory preemption in the act itself and it wouldn't be more clear. This, these statutes um at issue in this case don't have any such language.
Is that why you're would recommend an appeal?
Well, a- again, I don't want to get into the legal arguments, but I disagree with the judge's opinion.
Yeah, I mean, the judge came up really clearly and said, here, the court finds based on Act ninety five, the airport has all the powers of a local government, which includes zoning. And I thought, boy, that's pretty that's pretty blunt.
Well, so the statute does contain such a reference, except for the last part, which includes zoning. That is not in the statute. In fact, there are a couple of others.
Statue, Mike, are you talking?
Act ninety five.
Which is, which is what, says what?
Basically, um, it says that they have exclusive authority over the airport and or landing, landing facilities and aeronautical facility.
So Act ninety five isn't the, isn't the legislation, legislation that created the the this authority, correct?
No, it is.
That's what it is. I was just going to make him clarify.
So wait, this is the same. So this is, so this language, this was language that was slipped into or added to the legislation that took this airport from a county airport to an authority, which is a five member board appointed by the county. And in that, they slipped that language in?
Yeah, I I'm, I wouldn't necessarily call, say slipping in.
Slipped in.
Well, because, because it's not as, as it's in the opinion, that's not what it says. It does say that it, they have all of the authority that a local subdivision would have, the the authority does. But then there are caveats to that that are in the act itself. Like, so if you said, I'll give you an example. If I said, you have all the power of a local um municipality, they're line sentence number one. Sentence number two says, except for these areas, right? Well, you couldn't read the first one and say you have all the powers and stop there. You've got to move on to the next one because there are carve outs then under the act. And so, you know, they only give um the exclusive authority when it comes to zoning because it it specifically says this act does not preempt you from exercising zoning outside of or planning outside of the airport. Well, that's an important concept, right? Um, but it also because of the framework of the sentence says, you know, except for the exclusive authority over landing facilities and the aeronautical facilities, nothing in this act create uh precludes the township from enforcing its zoning ordinance or engaging in planning of property outside of the airport. Which makes sense when you consider that there's another provision that um requires the township to incorporate the um airport layout plan, right? And landing approach plan um as part of your master plan. Which means that's the part that they refer to as part of the planning outside of the airport because they do planning inside of the airport. But it doesn't go so far as to preempt zoning. And that's what we argued um in front of the judge. Judge issued his opinion and so it's, you know, time to move on.
So like this act came out in in two thousand and fifteen, the judge wrote. Have there been challenges to it since then that you know of?
No, not that I'm aware of.
But again, this is the act that creates the of the Gerald R. Ford. It creates it, the authority as opposed to a county airport.
And is it fair to say too that there's pieces of it that are very vague that we would also hope that get clarified when we appeal?
Yes.
I mean, uh, cause that's part of the.
Yeah, although.
The definitions they use or the wording they use does not fit previous statute.
Yeah, I I would argue it's not vague.
It just doesn't match.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't match previous statute with the definitions that we.
But even the, even the definitions that are in there were not even addressed, right? And the different words have meaning.
Correct.
And the legislature chose very specific words that were defined in other parts of the same act. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So that when you read them in those terms and it's not, never even mentioned in there.
Correct. And FAA has specific terms they use in their language that were not mentioned in this act either, correct?
Correct.
I think, yeah, I think that's one of the biggest issues.
Yep. At the county level, so this poor decision at the county level, same county level that um granted Cascade Township the state ARPA funds for P. Foster remediation, but it was um contingent upon Cascade Township's release of any liability of the airport. So we stood up to them on that and will pursue this too. Thank you for being on top of it, Mike.
You're welcome. So what's the process, Mike, if we appeal?
So first we have to file a claim of appeal. It's um more administrative procedural um than anything else. And then we file a brief on appeal. They file a response, we file a reply and then down the road someday it gets set for oral arguments.
Will you make sure that you can file a really good appeal? That's what Mike does.
I know.
So what is?
Yes, I will.
How long you think that process would be, maybe?
Well.
Year?
Yeah, usually it's about a year. Um, year, year and a half.
Hey, Mike, you have a question? So what happens within that year if the year, there's a development that comes across our desk?
Well, right, right now, the decision, we we would follow the court's current decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then do you need formal action by this board to authorize this?
Yeah, I mean, it would be good to authorize the appeal.
So right now, stormwater management. Who would? What? What authority would have oversight of that?
The airport authority.
The airport authority, under this judge's ruling, has the sole discrepancy to regulate its own, its own.
If you read, if, if you read the opinion, as the judge wrote it, he said they have all the power of a local municipality, including zoning. Why wouldn't that include stormwater?
What's the point of local zoning?
Between this and renewable energy, you start to question, yeah.
So with judges like that, who needs a?
I'm not going to criticize the judge. She, you know, he, he did, did what he, you know, he writes an opinion, then we have options.
Yep. But he writes the opinion.
Yes, somebody did.
Before you could argue. Obviously.
It would have been nice to have it the day before.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Especially if it was printed and ready to be handed out.
He was like, oh, that's nice here.
Shipley makes a motion to uh instruct the legal uh counsel to write an appeal versus the findings of the Kent County judge.
Support. So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by supervisor Lusprance, to direct legal counsel to file an appeal on behalf of Cascade Charter Township in the lawsuit filed by the airport. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Mike.
Right.
Article eleven, public comments. Any comments whether the issue is on tonight's agenda or not? Anyone virtually wishing to comment? Manager comments?
I have nothing tonight.
Board member comments?
Well, I do. First of all, thank you for coming down and spending your valuable time uh trying to understand the legal ramifications that we're going through as a growing community. I wish uh Mr. Comcast was still here because I twist his arm and try and get pressure to disconnect the utilities to the Tuffy Building. Which
Oh, he, he just knows to it.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
He knows somebody who knows somebody who knows somebody.
Or at least we can blame him for the slow up.
Um. Ordances and challenges to zoning are going to be constant. The growth of the township is constant. The only thing I ask uh Jade is in the cubicles, please keep the partitions between the uh various offices down to four foot or minimum or maximum so that we can still have interaction between the various staff members. Very important if you read management. That's all I have.
That's why I thank Mike and Foster Swift for um your legal expertise. We've got really complicated issues that keep coming up. Cascade Township is the highest, uh as far as property, property income tax revenue. Cascade Township is the most affluent um township in Kent County. So we've got very complicated, complex, important issues that have come up and um appreciate Foster Swift's representation. And I can't believe when I started, we were sharing the same law firm as the airport. That someone thought that was okay, but really happy we're not there anymore. We may have even had the same attorney when that legislation was drafted in two thousand and fifteen, because we sure had it in two thousand and nineteen. But anyways, we've moved on. We no longer share the engineering firm either or the PR firm, so I think we're in a lot better place. Further comments or motions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
So motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Nordhook, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.